...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This leaves, will you call the roll?
Mr. Boyce?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Elliott? Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Thurston?
Present.
Ms. Wiles?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Present.
Mr. President, you have a form.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the executive session memorandum of March 26th?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the executive session memorandum for March 26th. It's a hand vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Eight, zero. Kind of approval of the minutes for our March 26th special session.
So moved?
Second.
There's a motion to approve the March 26th special session and a second. There's a hand vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven, oh, and one abstention.
One abstention.
Approval of our minutes from the March 26th meeting.
So moved?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve our March 26th meeting minutes. There's a hand vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven, zero, one. Before we get to the approval of the agenda, Mr. Hughes, could you walk us through the special, the public hearing?
Yes, I could. Thank you, Mr. President. Jonathan Hughes, City Attorney. If you'll look under your agenda under new ordinances for discussion, the two impact fee ordinances, which are number 12-04-24 and number 13-04-24 relating to the road impact and park impact fee respectively. On the agenda, it indicates that we're also seeking to establish a public hearing. We already had the public hearing under the ordinance that's held, or under the statute that's held before the plan commission. So we've already had the public hearing. So we no longer need you to establish a public hearing. We'd request that you remove that portion from your agenda. Still introduce the ordinances, but no public hearing is necessary.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to amend the agenda?
We're gonna just...
What? We can.
Yes. So, Mr. President, I would move that we adjust the agenda and put proposed presentation number seven after the approval of the claims.
Second.
And?
Right, and remove the items for public hearing for the road impact and park impact fees.
Second. There's a second. There's a motion and a second to amend the agenda. There's a hand vote. All in favor to amend the agenda, raise your right hand. Eight, oh.
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Please raise your right hand. Who seconded that?
Everybody.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Mr. Thursday.
That's all right. I came too. I don't care.
Okay.
And I don't care.
Where am I at? Any petitions or comments by citizens who are present? I have no cards in front of me, but since it's a full house, if there's a white, there's a white card out back, out by the door. If anybody would like to make a comment, please fill that out and give it to our clerk. Mayor's comments.
Evening, Mr. President, and happy Tuesday. Happy Masters Week for all who celebrate. Mr. Thurston as well. Just quickly, I know you have a long agenda tonight. I just want to say a few things about this past weekend. First of all, welcome back from spring break for Noblesville Schools and Hamilton Southeastern Schools as well. I think this week will be somewhat of a trying time for all of us as it is the height and the start of construction season in the city of Noblesville. I know many of you have gotten emails and great correspondence from our many citizens who have concerns about the construction going on in Noblesville. I just appreciate all your communication with us here internally at City Hall. Any citizens who have concerns, please feel free to get them, have them call the mayor's office or call me directly. There's a lot of moving parts between 146th and Alstonville Road, between State Road 32 and downtown, between Pleasant Street and pretty much every road in between as well. So it is a, it's a great time for progress in our city. I'm really excited for the end results of all those projects, but I know it will be painful for some folks, especially the State Road 32, Connor Street closure. I know I spoke with each one of you about that project. That is a state-controlled project. NDOT is running that project. At the same time, we're coordinating with them on a daily, sometimes hourly basis on that project. We're working with our street department, our planning department, our engineering department to make sure proper signage is in place for that. We do have a no-truck ordinance on our downtown streets that our officers are working hard to enforce. At the same time, this is a large city with a lot of traffic that flows through it. We're bound to miss a few, and I would just ask for a little grace along the way for everyone involved. Our public safety officials are doing the best they can while keeping 77,000 people safe on a daily basis as well. So just thanks for your patience and your grace along the way in the city of Noblesville. This too shall pass. It'll be great when it's done, as is most every other construction project that we undertake. But just want to say thanks to all of you for helping to be ambassadors for the city and for progress that we're undertaking. Quickly, this past, yesterday, hopefully you all enjoyed the solar eclipse. I thought it was actually way cooler than I thought it was gonna be. And hopefully, many people, it was neat to see so many friends and neighbors outside with their families and taking that all in. I do want to give a special thank you to Aaron Head, who you'll hear from tonight about another topic, but Aaron and Alexi Rock in the mayor's office kind of both spearheaded that for us. We kind of tackled it from a two-pronged approach. First and foremost is public safety, making sure that we can continue to move 77,000 people through the city while keeping people safe. So thank you to our public safety officials who worked tirelessly to make sure that that was a seamless day for us. But then also, on the tourism side, if people are gonna come to Noblesville, we'd love to take their money. So we made sure that we had plenty of events for them and to spend their money at the last several days. So thank you to all of you who came out to Federal Hill Commons for the pre-clip's party on Saturday and for the different events at Ruff and around the city yesterday as well. So looking forward to hearing some great projects tonight that are gonna be intro'd in front of you. I think it's a sign of things to come in Noblesville, which is really exciting. So with that, happy to take any questions, but thanks for all that you do, and please let me know how I can help.
As we enter road construction season, you want to go ahead and give out your personal cell phone number?
Yeah, absolutely. It's 317-509-3134. Happy to chat with anyone about the progress that's happening in the ninth larger city in the state of Indiana.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Council committee reports. Finance, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met April 4th. Dave Johnson, Megan Wiles, and myself. Matt Light discussed with us an update for the impact fee analysis for roads and parks. We're gonna hear a little bit about that this evening. Ian Zalgowski gave us an update for the summary of routine appropriation transfers for quarter one of 2024. And Caitlin Moss gave us an update for the summary of appropriation of grant proceeds for quarter one, 2024. That and the claims come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Any questions for Mr. Davis?
Mr. President, I would move that we approve the claims as presented.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the claims is a hand vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Eight, oh. All right. Per our amended agenda, we will move to miscellaneous number seven. Council to hear introductory information for construction of a Hamilton County Public Safety Communications Center north of existing Presley Boulevard and Home Depot and east of the Hamilton County Solar Fields. Welcome back. Steve Wood.
Thank you very much, and I'm gonna make this shorter. You guys have busy agenda. First thing I would like to tell you is the county allowed Noblesville to have drones work out of the 4H fairgrounds on the top of the parking garage, and that went well. Your staff did a great job. I want to make sure I wear that. And with the road construction going on in Noblesville, it's, I know it's tough on you guys, but I think the detours are working. Your staff's doing a good job. I just wanted to point that out. We are looking at building a new 911 facility over behind Home Depot, basically, into the drive down there. It'll be roughly 100,000 square feet. We're working with the planning and engineering department. There's still a lot in the process to go with this. We will be doing an access road off of 37, working with the state for secondary access as well. This all comes from several years ago. I think Mr. Boyce was on council at the time. The state of Indiana required to get rid of 911 facilities except for one for each municipality and the county. So Noblesville's went to the counties along with Carmels, and we picked up all the other municipalities. So it's time for growth. We are planning for a 25- to 50-year growth out there on that location. Like I said, we are working with the planning and engineering, and obviously commissioners are working with the mayor as well. Any questions you have, I'm more than willing to ask, and as construction process moves on, if you want to come out and see the facility, we will take you out there.
Couple of questions. What are the odds of the 37 curb cut?
We have to have a secondary in and out for emergency vehicles, right? So that's, I'm pretty sure that's gonna work out.
Okay.
And will that be a right-in, right-out?
Right-in, right-out only for emergency vehicles only.
Okay.
So like if there was a fire, the fire department could get there and come right in and right out. That's exactly what it's supposed to be for.
And you know, will the property be annexed or will it remain county property?
It'll still be underneath the GO.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
New ordinance for discussion. Council to consider ordinance 090424 and ordinance establishing a designated outdoor refreshment area, DORA, in accordance with IC 7.1-3-31 and establishing a public hearing.
Moved to introduce?
Second.
Aaron Head.
Good afternoon, council. Good evening, council, I should say. Thank you for letting us present tonight on this new exciting ordinance for our downtown. For the record, my name's Aaron Head. I'm Community Engagement Manager for the city of Noblesville. And before you tonight is our designated outdoor refreshment area ordinance, and as an acronym, it's DORA. Some of you may have heard, we have talked about this for a little bit of time now, a little bit of the history on that. Back in 2021, the city of Noblesville and administration, along with our partners at Chamber of Commerce and other stakeholders, lobbied the state of Indiana to adopt legislation to allow municipalities to adopt local DORA districts. In 2023, this legislation actually became state law, enabling municipalities to go ahead and adopt DORA ordinances. And since that time, we've worked through what our ordinance looks like, boundaries, and all the things you're gonna see in the presentation this evening. And this year, we're looking to go ahead and adopt that ordinance. So what is a DORA? So nope, we're not talking about cartoon adventurers. We are talking about designated outdoor refreshment areas. And so essentially, what that is, is a limited ability to carry alcoholic beverages outdoors in a designated area. What you can do is you can go into a bar, restaurant, order up to two drinks. You may carry those out into what that designated area is, where that's created, and enjoy your beverages as you shop, dine, and stroll around, and in this case, our downtown. So the benefits of a DORA. So the first benefit is, what we've seen is communities that have these adopted see an instantaneous boost in tourism and foot traffic amongst their businesses in their DORA areas. The benefit of that is anytime that we try to enact new things in our downtown, we're doing that to try to benefit our businesses, to attract people to our community, to attract people downtown, to spend their dollars, support our small businesses, including restaurants and our retailers. There's new revenue source for bars and restaurants. Obviously, this is something we haven't had before. So now they're able to serve patrons without them having to sit at a table inside of their location. There's increased revenue and spending at retailers downtown. So what we've seen in communities that have adopted these areas before is that people get a drink, they like to stroll around, they do shopping, and people loosen up their wallets a little bit when they have a beverage. And so the ability to sip, shop, and stroll is sort of what we look at as the identity of what we establish with this type of district. And lastly, there's, it's an easier process for event organizers to have alcoholic beverages at their events. There's a lot of ATC oversight on how alcohol beverages are permitted at events, and some can be next to others and some can't. This enables this to be a much easier process that we'll learn a little bit later in the presentation. So DORA regulations. There's a set of rules that we have looked over and are establishing as part of our ordinance. A lot of those are pertaining to what the state of Indiana has for the, with their laws on the books. And we can kind of tailor that to our community as well. There's some kind of flexibility in what we can do. So as of right now, we've established our hours Monday through Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., or excuse me, noon to 10:00 p.m., and then Friday through Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And a lot of those hours kind of match up with a lot of our events that we have downtown. So as we have people downtown, they have that ability to utilize this new legislation. Beverages must be served in a specifically designated cup with a DORA branding. So we've started to work with beverage vendors to establish the exact type of cup that will be used. You know, bars and restaurants can't just hand you a beer in a bottle and you can walk out the door. There's a specific plastic cup that's utilized and has the branding and logo of our district on it. Minimum of two beverages is the limit that you can take at one time, and beverages must stay within the DORA boundaries. Some additional regulations. DORA beverages may not be carried back into a bar or restaurant. So you go out, if you're shopping, you finish that drink, you toss it out. If you want to go get another beverage, then you'd go back into a bar or restaurant and do that. Signers must be posted at all boundaries. So on our DORA map that you'll see, we have shown where all that signage will be located throughout that district. So as you get near a boundary, you know that you can't take that drink any further. Other retailers may display signage indicating whether or not beverages may enter their business. So there's a clear identification. If I'm a final boutique, then you know, if you want to be able to walk in with your beverage, there's some signage, like a window cling that shows that you can, or people that don't want beverages have a window cling as well. It's not a requirement that they have one, but it's something that people can easily identify that beverages are allowed or not allowed in their business. Beverage regulations. So this is the state, again, the state regulation. The beer, malt beverages, up to 16 ounces. Wine, cider, pre-mixed cocktail, 12 ounces, and then a liquor, liquor-based cocktail, up to 10 ounces, including two ounces of liquor. So the boundaries that we are looking to establish is, look it on your screen now, and it also shows the number of businesses that have applied to be a designated perma-T. We'll take those applications and we submit those to the state with our ordinance, if adopted, to go along with that. We have to have a minimum of one. We've had a good turnout so far, businesses, so we have 10 at this, at this time. On this map, I want to just kind of talk about the boundaries and how we came up with what that looks like. So what you have kind of on the right side of the map is what we would look at as our central business district. We have most of your commercial operations. We don't extend into the residential areas at all with those boundaries. And as we go, we flex across the river, we pick up Federal Hill Commons, create that connectivity across the Logan Street Bridge, the Bridge of Flowers. On the north side of the map, you can see the boundary extend into Forest Park. That boundary follows our White River Greenway. So if you're downtown, you want to stroll down a trail, you can take your drink, stroll on the trail over the river into a future trail connection that will have between Forest Park and Federal Hill. So once that trail's established, then you have almost a consistent walking path that you could have a drink and enjoy our downtown, the beautiful river, the River Walk, events, and shopping on the square. On the south side of that map, what you'll see is the boundary follows the River Walk Trail as you come across the river, and then kind of heads due east and picks up Noblesville Creates and their campus down Maple, and then over to essentially what you see as the east side of 10th Street. We've created these boundaries with events in mind as well. So you have vendor areas, and there's some regulations with how vendors are allowed to be, like say, at the street dance, for instance. If you have a beer vendor, we have to show those on our map where those vendor locations can be. The locations are identified with the pin drops on there. You can see we have a good amount of vendors in downtown, and then on the other side of the river, Brew Burger as an anchor. And then on the other side of the river, Brew Burger as an anchor on the west side of the river. We anticipate that more businesses will sign up to be designated permittees as we go along. They can only do that as a part of resolution to this ordinance. So if somebody wants to sign on to be a part of this, you would see that come back in front of you again. Signage. So a really big, important part of this process is showing signage that indicates where the boundaries are at. So according to the state of Indiana, those boundaries are anywhere where a pedestrian could walk. So you wouldn't see them necessarily in an alley or something like that, but you would see them at any sidewalk where that sidewalk ends at the boundaries of the DORA. We'd use a kind of a mix of signs, whether that be signs attached to infrastructure, poles. We have sidewalk decals that we can put on the sidewalk that would kind of create the ability not to have a lot of signage that's up and you have it on the ground, and additional A-frame signage throughout the DORA showing where the district's at, the boundaries, and places that you can take a beverage. Additional signage. The signage that you, we have on the left side of your screen is based on the state's requirements of what we have to say on that sign. There's some stuff about enjoying responsibly. There's also the QR code that takes you to the map, the regulations, FAQ. And then on the right side, you see essentially an exhibit that shows what a DORA cup would look like. So just a clear plastic cup with a DORA logo. For business signage, as we mentioned earlier, there's some different signage, window clings that businesses could have. So you have on the left signage that indicates where beverages can be sold. Then in the middle, you have a sign that shows a business that allows beverages inside. And then beverages that are not allowed in retailers would have a different color-coded sticker. So proven concept. So this is new to the state of Indiana, but it's not a new legislation in states that border Indiana. So for instance, in Ohio, they've had these types of districts for nearly ten years. And so we can look at some kind of best case and best practices from those communities that have done this for so long to build how we want our DORA to look like as well. So we've been able to look at some communities like Dublin, Ohio, Troy, Ohio, and others, Columbus, Ohio, that have established these. And we can look at what are they doing well that we can also do in our community. There are currently nine communities in Indiana that have approved DORA districts. I have those listed there, the most recent, Fort Wayne. So there are communities that are starting to get their DORA areas approved. We would be the first in Hamilton County to do that. Certainly something that would attract people to our community to spend their dollars. Just a couple of other items on proving this concept. In Troy, Ohio, in two thousand and twenty-one, they created a survey with twenty-four communities. Seventy-five percent of respondents in that survey stated there was no impact on sanitation. And the other twenty-five percent said there's a minimal impact. So trash debris, that kind of thing. We are really set up well as, just today, from a sanitation standpoint, not only with the trash cans that are on each half block. We also have two members of our street department that oversee downtown specifically. And they are downtown every single day, picking up trash, looking around, making sure that everything looks right. And so we kind of are in a unique position to be able to do this very well. Ninety-six percent stated no increase in crime. So sometimes when we talk about these types of districts, people have an image in their head of it's going to be some sort of party area, something like that. We don't have that demographic in our community. What we find is that, again, ninety-six percent that were polled in this case said no uptick in crime whatsoever. We also have worked with the Public Safety Department, Chad Connect, Officer Cunningham put together a safety plan as well. We have our Public Safety Office right here in downtown, and they're, again, uniquely, have the unique ability to serve our downtown because of how, the close proximity. Some of that, that safety plan has to do with additional people at first, kind of just being around downtown on patrol, and then at events, had an increased police presence like we do today already, just to make sure that we're monitoring how the district works. Eighty percent stated no, they had an overall increase in foot traffic in their downtown. The other twenty percent that took that poll, they had just adopted, so they weren't able to actually answer that question. But when we see that an eighty percent increase, we know that that model is proven to increase foot traffic to our businesses. And overall, the communities that were part of that poll said that they would recommend other communities adopt DORA districts in their cities and towns. So next steps with our ordinance would be, this is first reading, so we go to second reading on April twenty-third and have public comment. On April twenty-fourth, if that ordinance is adopted, I will begin that process of submitting that to the state of Indiana to adopt our ordinance in the state, and then we can start the process of getting our signage up and communicating to businesses and getting everybody in line in terms of when we can roll out our district. We also have the ability to create up to seven Doras in our community. So we look at Hamilton Town Center as another opportunity. We can create additional Doras based on events. So like Front Porch Music Festival can be a DORA that's established for that day. Indiana Peony Festival as well. We've talked to the state about how we can do that and accommodate that and work that into our ordinance. What we wanted to do is get this off the ground here and, you know, test the model first before we start expanding on that. An additional designated permittees and vendors, again, they're going to come back by resolution to council if we add, you know, additional bars and restaurants open. And another, just an item to note, we do have a page on our city website. So if you go to cityofnoblesville.in.gov backslash DORA, there's an FAQ, it has the map, and so we're starting to roll out that information to the public. We've had lots of conversations with businesses downtown. The overall consensus from restaurants is they just keep asking me when it's going to start. So they're very excited to have this opportunity. The retailers that have responded to a survey that I sent out are all excited as well. They didn't really express any concerns. They just want it to start so then they can adopt this new, like, really exciting, unique opportunity in our downtown. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Redd. This has been a lot of, a lot of work.
Very long-winded, but a lot of information. So I got a lot of people behind me like, God, can this guy get out of here? So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron.
Mr. President, I believe we need to establish a public hearing at our next regular meeting for ordinance zero nine dash zero four dash twenty-four, and that's a motion.
Second. There's a motion to establish a public hearing for ordinance oh nine oh four twenty-four at our next regular meeting in a second. Does a hand vote? All who favor, raise your right hand. Eight oh. Council to consider ordinance ten oh four twenty-four and ordinance adopting a change of zoning from R one, single-family residential to R five, multifamily residential for approximately twenty-seven acres north of Greenfield Avenue, south of East One Hundred and Fifty-Sixth Street, and east of Promise Road.
Moved to introduce.
Second.
Joyce Sanyel. Do you want me to do these two together?
That would be great.
We also have to council to consider ordinance eleven oh four twenty-four and ordinance adopting a change of zoning from R five, multifamily residential to R five PD residential plan development, including a preliminary development plan for the construction of for-sale townhomes on approximately twenty-seven acres north of Greenfield Avenue, south east of One Hundred and Fifty-Sixth Street, and east of Promise Road.
Moved to introduce.
Second.
Now Joyce Sanyel.
Thank you. Good evening. So tonight, we're talking about a change of zoning from what is R one, single-family residential to R five residential, multifamily residential. The reason for the request of the R five is that is the only zoning district that will allow a single building having multiple units in it of three or more. So if you have three or more units and you want to build in the city of Noblesville, it has to be zoned R five, multifamily residential. The second ordinance that we have before us is the adoption of a preliminary development plan and ordinance that would govern that area. The proposal is for two- and three-story, two- and three-story townhomes. Basically, their proposal shows both what I'm going to say are pink and yellow areas here. The yellow areas are the three-story structures. The pink areas are the two-story structures. They purposely kept basically the two-story structures on the external part of the proposal. This would be an elevation of the three-story homes. This is also an elevation of the two-story townhomes. Again, this is for just two- and three-story townhomes. In the surrounding area, there are different zoning districts. Unfortunately, in the corporate campus, because it is done a little bit differently, the corporate campus is its own zoning district. However, underneath that zoning district are land use categories. For instance, across the street here would be a single-family category. Next to that, because there are attached structures containing at least three or more units, it's the senior housing. That is actually zone multifamily. There has a land use category, multifamily. So although on the zoning map, you see it as corporate campus, it does have underlying land uses. Again, some of the area here is in residential, a single-family. This here is our four-single-family, which would permit duplex units or a single-family structure. There were individuals at the public hearing at the Plan Commission that spoke basically, I'm going to say against the proposal citing traffic along One Hundred and Fifty-Sixth Street and Promise Road, density of the proposal, and the height of the structures. Again, there was discussion at the meeting regarding the leasing of units to others. The Plan Commission in their motion to the council did send a favorable recommendation. However, they wanted a commitment regarding the leasing of those, those units. So basically, as the commitment, just summarizing it very briefly, states that if you purchase this property, you have to basically reside in it for a year before you can, before you can lease it to someone else. If you lease it to someone else, then it has to be for a minimum of twelve months also. That commitment was basically established at the Plan Commission. I don't know whether, I don't think Mr. Hughes has had an opportunity to really review that commitment. So if you have any questions, again, it did come to you with a favorable recommendation, both ordinances for adoption by an eight or a unanimous vote of those present that evening, and that was eight members.
Mr. President, members of the council, I did have a chance, Joyce and I touched base at before the meeting. I hadn't had a chance to review, but I did during the earlier presentations, and it more or less matches what the Plan Commission requested. And essentially what it is, the commitment is, no leasing of a facility until it's been owned by someone for a year, except in the event of hardship or foreclosure. And that if you have a hardship, you have to apply to the homeowners association to let them know about your hardship. And then the other leasing commitment is, no lease can be shorter than twelve months. So twelve months or longer on the lease terms. And those are commitments to put those into the covenants so that the homeowners association would then be the party that's responsible for enforcing those. So it's more or less consistent, but you as a council can ask for additional commitments or modify those as you see fit.
Mr. President, I have a question regarding that. Is there a cap on the percentage of the neighborhood that can be leased?
So there was not a cap on the percentage that was offered as part of the commitment, but that's certainly something that you can ask the petitioner about their thoughts on that and whether they're willing to make a commitment to that extent as well. This was a conversation at the Plan Commission. There are rules about what we can do through zoning, but we can ask for commitments that they would put into their homeowners association commitments, that then a future homeowners association has the right to modify or amend, but at least you can recommend that those be included in, as part of the commitments.
Mr. President, good question. So what about enforcement? You know, if you've got a big corporation that buys a house, they rent it out before a year. How do we enforce that?
Yeah, so the enforcement mechanism we would have on this commitment is to ensure that it's put into the covenants and restrictions. There's nothing in this commitment that says we have the right to enforce it because it's a homeowners association enforcement issue. So then the HOA and the neighbors in that community would have to go to their HOA and ask them to enforce that commitment against the party.
And usually, your neighbors are better at policing that than the city ever would be. Any other questions? I have a couple. There was a traffic study done as part of this project.
That is correct.
Okay. And engineering's had a chance to review that and feel comfortable with that. Okay. I felt comfortable with the question about the size. I felt comfortable with the question about the density. So that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Schenover. Would you like to shed some light on this project?
Thank you. For the record, my name is Jim Schenover. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Nelson and Frankenberger. We are representing the applicant, M.I. Holmes of Indiana. With us tonight on behalf of M.I., Jonathan Isaacs and Ethan Spalding. Also with me is John Dobishewicz from our office. As explained to you, this request is seeking a rezone and preliminary development plan approval for the rezone ordinance that we refer to as Towns at Two Thirty-Eight. It should be noted, the name of the zoning ordinance was Towns at Two Thirty-Eight. We did receive some input from a council member who preferred a different naming of the community. So M.I. is considering, for branding purposes of the actual community, how it'd be referred to, to change that name to Montalina. So I just wanted to mention that at the outset because we heard that, we received that request and we wanted to respond to it. With that said, we do come to you with an eight to zero positive recommendation from the Plan Commission. And the subject, real estate, that Joyce Sands generally described, is shown on this site aerial exhibit. It's the twenty-seven acres that is outlined in this blue color. You'll see it's immediately north of and adjacent to Greenfield Avenue, east of and adjacent to Promise Road, and then south of and adjacent to One Hundred and Fifty-Sixth Street. There's quite a few things going on along this segment of Greenfield Avenue as shown on this particular map regarding some surrounding uses and zoning classifications generally. The homes that are to our immediate west, we have homes located here. But then as you go further west to the intersection of Greenfield Avenue and Union Chapel Road, that particular site is actually zoned for commercial. Then just to the north of that site is where you'll find the Chapel Villas community. To the north of that, Chapel Woods, and then to the northeast, you'll find Brooks Farms. You'll also see on the aerial photograph we have here, to our immediate north, there is a small landscape business. To our immediate east is an agribusiness. And then as you move south across Greenfield Avenue, you come to a real estate that is zoned through the corporate campus district that includes Waterman Farms. And then further to the southwest, you have the Meredith Meadows Senior Apartments, which also is a multifamily type of development. And then as you get further, again, to the intersection near Union Chapel and Greenfield Avenue, you have some other commercial uses. So I only point that out because the way M.I. views this site, the way we view this site, it's an infill development that has different things going around it, and we felt that this type of townhome, for-sale townhome community would be an appropriate transition to the things that are occurring in the area. This next exhibit is the conceptual site plan. It's also included in your informational brochures that we had submitted. Again, Greenfield Avenue to the south, One Hundred and Fifty-Sixth Street, Promise Road. Again, this would be for a hundred and ninety for-sale townhomes. And access to the community would be from Greenfield Avenue to the south as well as One Hundred and Fifty-Sixth Street to the north. One thing that was very important in how M.I. looked at this site was they have two different types of townhomes as far as size. They have a two-story townhome and a three-story townhome. The three-story townhomes, shown in what I guess I would say is orange. The three-story townhomes are only adjacent to Greenfield Avenue and then internal to the site. And the two-story townhomes are then placed along the perimeter of the site, adjacent to Promise Road, One Hundred and Fifty-Sixth Street. So that's where the two-story townhomes would be located. Again, to be acknowledged and be sensitive to the residential uses that- Again, to be acknowledged and be sensitive to the residential uses that border those particular boundaries. The other design element is that for the three-story townhomes, they are rear-load townhomes so that the front facing, Greenfield Avenue presents a good aesthetic front to that side, whereas the two-story townhomes, we didn't want garages facing toward those other residential uses, so you'll see the rears of those townhomes for the two-story models in those positions. As Joyceanne already showed, but I want to show again, these are the renderings of the two-story townhomes. Again, these would be along the perimeters of Promise Road, 156th Street. These are the front elevations of those townhomes. We included in your informational brochures all four sides of those particular townhome units. And then these would be the front elevations for the three-story townhomes, again, facing Greenfield Avenue and internal to the site. One of the other important items regarding these units is they all have attached garages that would accommodate two cars, and driveway lengths are of such a length that they would also allow parking of cars on driveways for two additional parking spaces. And then we've also included guest parking around the real estate, as well as the opportunity also exists that there could be some on-street parking based on the road whiffs. So we feel that we've tried to provide accommodating, essential guest parking around the particular development. One of the other items that I wanted to point out, going back to the site plan, there's a larger open space common area that's in this particular location of the site plan, and that would be programmed for some amenities. Again, these images were included in your brochure, but they would include such amenities as a gazebo and seating area, a fire pit area, and then areas planned for a bocce ball or cornhole. So providing those community amenities and gathering spaces for the public were very important. Regarding square footages generally, they would range from 1,500 square feet to 2,000 square feet in size, with anticipated price ranges ranging between $290,000 up to $350,000. Because this is a townhome community development, all exterior maintenance, all lawn maintenance, all that common area maintenance would be provided for by the HOA, and the HOA would have a professional management company that would operate it. Joyceanne also referred to the zoning commitments that the Plan Commission asked for that were included behind tab nine of your brochures. That was a request that was made at the Plan Commission meeting, and again, what the request related to was not allowing for any leasing or rentals of the homes based on original construction and buyers taking occupation. They'd have to live there for at least a year before they could lease any unit, and if they were to lease any unit in the future, it had to be a lease for at least 12 months or more. So we wanted to provide that commitment that the Plan Commission had requested. In conclusion, we've worked closely with the development team, the city's development team, Sarah Reed, Caleb Gutshaw and their team, as we went through the process to refine the proposal. The planning staff was in support of the request as we went through the process, and we appreciate all of Joyceanne Yelton's time and effort on this particular proposal. And again, we come to you with an eight to zero positive recommendation from the Plan Commission. We thank you for your time tonight, and we'll remain available to answer any questions that you may have of us. Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't really have a question, Mr. President, but it's more of a comment, which I have shared with Mr. Schenover and others, is that I've heard from my constituents, who are the neighbors around this project, and they're very concerned about the density as MI and the additional traffic. While I understand that it's been looked at with the traffic study, Greenfield Avenue is pretty busy as it already is, and you add 190 new homes with at least one driver per, that makes a significant impact. So I am expressing my concern and would prefer that it be a much less dense project.
Thank you. Any other questions? If this were, did not fall into the R5 zoning because of the nature of the attachment, do you have any idea what the density would be, where it would fall?
I think it would be more similar to an R4 type of development.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I was going to say that because this had remonstrators at the Plan Commission, anytime that we've got a development presentation that has remonstrators at Plan Commission, this will be a two-step process. So we're hearing it tonight, and then we will vote on it in two weeks.
Thank you. We'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Council to consider ordinance 120424 and ordinance adopting road impact fees and establishing a public hearing.
Smith to introduce.
Second.
Jim Hellman.
Mr. President, when you read that, did you read and establish a public hearing? Just note that we removed that, so we will not be establishing a public hearing.
I didn't say that.
Okay.
I did?
Yeah.
Oh, I sure did. All right.
We will not meet on this one or the next one, so.
I rarely listen to myself.
That's okay.
Okay, you're up.
Good morning, oh, good afternoon, good evening.
We did.
He introduced, I moved to introduce.
Aaron Smith. That part I got right.
Good evening, council. Jim Hellman, Noblesville Assistant City Engineer with the Noblesville Engineering Department. I'm going to, I think most of you have all heard prior presentations on this through subsequentities to prior ones, but I'm going to kind of do a high level. Happy to answer any questions. First of all, I'm going to touch off on the impact fee legislative as an overall, and then I'll kind of jump into the road impact fee, since this item is regarding the road impact fee ordinance, and then I'll hand it off to Matt and Chuck regarding the park impact fee. Like I said, we're presenting a road impact fee ordinance here. We've had these back since the late 90s. That's fairly close to when the state legislator, legislation allowed the adoption of impact fees. The intent is growth pays for growth, places the burden to expand infrastructure on users creating the demand for additional infrastructure instead of the current residents or taxpayers. We are projecting 21,000 new residents over the next 10 years, based on the 10-year growth that we're looking at. A lot of that's in Wayne Township, but there's other infill developments as well. Indiana Code defines it, the impact fee is a monetary charge imposed on new development by a unit to defray or mitigate the capital costs of infrastructure that is required by, necessitated by, or needed to serve new development. Again, growth pays for growth. The key requirements per the state statute is prepare a zone improvement plan. Basically, that's a study that we had A&amp;F Engineering perform for us to determine a fee based on the projected growth and the infrastructure needs. It establishes an advisory committee. I'll touch, I'll get into that a little bit more too, basically of residents in the real estate community as well. And the fees, one thing I'd really like to note, the fees cannot pay for existing deficiencies. So if there's intersections that identify that's having current issues, the fees cannot be used to rectify that. That's a current problem that's not being created by new growth and new development. The road fee applies to all land uses because homes create traffic, commercial creates traffic, so everyone is creating traffic. The park is residential land uses. There was actually, I think, in one of these presentations, someone asked that question on there, but kind of historically, essentially, residents are the ones creating the need for amenities and stuff like that because other ones aren't. That's something we can be discussed in the future, but historically, it's not, and maybe Chuck can touch on that later. The other thing is the fee is active for five years. So once you adopt a fee, it's effective for five years, and then you'll have to have a new study, new 10-year projections, and then establish a new fee at that time based on that study. What are the, some of the benefits from the communities? The study, it creates inventory of your current roadway capacity intersection. Like I said, you're looking at all the traffic information through the intersections and the segments. You're also evaluating what all those intersections are, are they aroundabout? Does it have any turn lanes? Doesn't? And then it runs the traffic through all of those. Revenues collected from the fee must be applied in the defined plan. The plan itself identifies specific projects and allocates an estimated cost of what those are. The fees are paid for new development and not existing residents. It reduces the potential for future tax increases and impacts to current taxpayers. That's always possible, but it reduces because of the metrics of the, there. From the developer's perspective, the costs are known upfront. That's probably one thing I've heard that from different communities, that could be a challenge. I'm going to use the example. So let's say you have a development, you've got four corners. The first corner comes in, they do a traffic study, intersection works fine. Development two comes in, intersection works fine. It's getting right at a capacity, but it's not there. It's still operating at acceptable level. Third development comes in, study shows intersection's failing. So is it fair to make development three, make all the improvements to the intersection? No. So this is basically an equitable, everyone's paying their equitable share based on the traffic there to generate. Developers do have the opportunity to do identified projects within the study and receive credit. So if like the study said there was an intersection improvement, it's adjacent to their project, they could go ahead and build that project and apply credits as they get building permits. So instead of the developer paying the city, then we hire a contractor to build it, they're just doing it directly, and they apply credits to their building permits. We established an impact advisory fee committee, had five members. We have Keith Blais, who's on, represents the development industry, Kurt Meyer, who also represents the real estate and development industry, Mike Moravich, Lori Dyer, and Steve Rogers. We had like a kickoff meeting with them, just talk about high level, and then once we got the studies back, we kind of presented the information to them regarding the fee. I can say in just general consensus, they were on board with the fee, didn't really look at lower anything, they couldn't really argue with it. I can say some from the development side, as a development, they're not wanting to pay the fee, but they could also appreciate that that cost has to be borne somewhere. So I'm going to kind of go over the big picture process, what it is, and kind of put a high level to both road and park. On the roadside, we do traffic counts. Again, we put those traffic counts with the current conditions and analyze them to find out if the intersection roadway segments meet the industry-accepted level of service. On the park side, they take census data, the inventory, the infrastructure amenities, and kind of put ratios of populations to trails, populations to pickleball courts and stuff like that. Chuck can get way more in the details of that, but that's at a high level. Then once they will see if there's any, taking the existing traffic and the existing conditions, find out if there's any current deficiencies. And if there are deficiencies, they'll identify what needs to be done to correct them and assign a value. And that value is assigned as a deficiency that must be corrected with non-impact fee funds. Then once we have all the baseline in, we had a 10-year projection of growth, looking at different areas that are undeveloped throughout town, and what level we think they're going to grow, and then looking at the zoning. So we make a projection of what kind of traffic is going to be generated, or on the park side, what kind of additional population they'll need to serve that. So then we add that additional traffic on top of the existing traffic, and then run that through the current intersections and roadway segments, and then identify if those are meeting the acceptable level of service, if not. If they are not meeting the current level of service with the existing and the added traffic, they'll propose recommendations. A lot of times on intersections, it's like a roundabout, or on a segment, it's adding travel lanes or something like that. And then what that improvement is, they'll identify the associated cost to that. Once we get all of the identified intersections, roadway segments, those are added up, and essentially, that total amount is divided by all the new traffic, so then you get your total cost per trip. Just to kind of give you some context of what we've, over the last five-year period, what we've collected. In road, we've collected $15 million. Really want to note, in calendar year 2023, almost a third of that, or six million. So like I said, we, I think you guys have put in an environment that people are wanting to invest in, so we are getting higher, we're approving developments that are generating traffic, but we're also collecting fees that gives us the ability to make roadway improvements. Park, $7.9 million. 1.6 of that was in 2023. And like very closely, our impact fee disbursements pretty closely match what we're bringing in, so we're kind of being balanced on there, being very fiscally responsible. We do show impact fee balances on both the road and park, but keep in mind, we have projects programmed, so there may be money in the bank today that is programmed for future in our projects that we have planned out. Since we did the last study, that was about four years ago for the road impact, as you probably heard just through the media and just personal experience, there has been significant inflation, especially in the construction industry. I have three metrics here that show, from the last time the road impact fee was approved till now, the inflation from that time period was 30% to 50%. So just to give you context of where we are, I mean, we can see that some of the projects, like the old study showed that we had, I'm going to make a number, $1.5 million. That project's now 1.8. So just, we had to adjust and project actual accurate, or more reflective estimated costs for these improvements. So this, I'm going to kind of jump into the meats and potato. So the recommended road impact fee is $583 per trip. One thing that I would say is new to this fee that we did not include in prior ones, and I don't think any other communities have, and it was actually from feedback from the advisory committee, because they asked about utility relocation costs, because if a utility is an easement, we have to pay that utility to relocate it, and that was kind of a little bit of a gap in the prior studies. So we looked at prior projects, and we assumed 10% of utility cost relocation. Our consultant actually reached out to Endot because they have a much lighter, broad spectrum, and they actually plan for 11%. So we're right in what they're seeing. I can say from some of our projects, 10% is way low. There's a couple of ones that it's high, but we're, we have data supporting that 10% there. We are proposing a 3% inflation per year, because just once this fee is locked down, costs continue, so at least do a 3% inflation per year for the five years of this ordinance. One thing also to note, so when we did this analysis, Pleasant Street was under construction, but we're not getting the benefit of Pleasant Street, and it still is, will provide a significant improvement to the transportation network. So of that, $583, $65 of that is attributed to Pleasant Street. So with the proposed ordinance, we were actually going to create, there was actually two funds. One is like the General Road Impact Fee Fund, and then there's the one to the Pleasant Street. So any money that gets attributed to the Pleasant Street Fund has to and will be applied to Pleasant Street to help fund that project. One thing I would note, I think some of you saw a draft presentation for me. The draft at that time represented $570 per trip, but with the final draft with some comments and going back and forth, the final recommendation was $583. So if you saw $570 before, that was, that was a draft study. One thing for, another thing for context is the 12, the December of 2020 recommendation was $390 per trip. We adopted $370 per trip. So I put kind of an inflation check, if you look at the bottom right, kind of looking at the 30% factor versus 50% factor. We're in that threshold, but I would also note, the prior fee did not consider that 10% for utility relocation. So it's not a complete apples-to-apples, but we're still within that framework of the different metrics. To give context, I did have, present to you up here, what are some of the other communities who have road impact fees? I also put the year they're adopted. Keep in mind, they have to be adopted every five years. So some of these did hit before a lot of the large inflation, but just wanted to like share what the other communities are. Some of these are currently being studied. I'm not sure if Matt knows which ones they're working on right now. For the most part, A&amp;F Engineering does these across the state, so they're the expert on those. Other things I would like to note is Hamilton County communities, if you notice, they are higher than a lot of the other ones, but keep in mind, Hamilton County communities have been growing much more. So when you have a, a lot of times, these developments are agricultural fields converting to neighborhoods, commercial uses. So an empty road has a lot of capacity, but once you start getting cars on there, they have less capacity. So once you get to a certain point, that's where your fee starts to expand, just because that existing capacity is being made up. Just for some example calculations based on what the recommended fee, here are the different kind of land uses and what the estimated here are the different kind of land uses and what the estimated fee would be. I can kind of let you skim through that. And just for some spatial context, like the Costco's 160,000 square feet, the Meyer that's under construction at 32, and Little Chicago Road, the Nexus Apartments at Lovinson, just for some spatial reference to look on there. Also would want to note that there is commercial things. I'll use a gas station as a big example. Let's say you're going to get gas, there's a gas station right there, you pull off, get back on the road you're going. That's not a new trip, we don't charge that. It's basically like a new destination. Like if you went out of your way to that gas station, that's a new trip, and there's data to support that. So how we do those estimates. Again, I mentioned the credit. So a developer has the option to construct the improvement that they're doing itself and apply credits to themselves instead of paying fees directly. Another thing I'd like to highlight is that we have two of those ongoing. Midland Point, they're doing improvements to Little Chicago Road, it's State Road 32 for credits. And River West was adding dual southbound left turn lanes onto 146th Street. One thing is there is the IT manual, it's a very black and white book. I don't always think a book is the best way to do it. So when our team does the calculations, we have them do it by the book. I also like them to think of it independently, try to forget about that book. Look at parking spaces, look at like how many employees those are. So we're looking at two approaches. If you're kind of getting the same number, I think we're in the ballpark. If they're not, then we need to have further conversations that we're being fair in there. Within the ordinance and also the state statute, there is a essentially an appeals board. We have had a handful of appeals filed, but to my recollection, I don't think we've ever had a meeting to actually get to it. Either the applicant was able to provide us information to justify it, and this kind of led to us having the more pragmatic and look at it a two-pronged approach for that reason. I'll give a couple examples. Kroger, when they had the gas station here on Logan Street, we calculated fee that was a lot higher than what they were expecting because of the rewards card. They were able to tell us that almost, I think it was roughly 20% of the people who go to the grocery store also get gas. So those aren't creating new trips on the road when they're just going back and forth. So we reduced their fee by that, and they were agreeable. Noblesville High School, the recent expansion shows a lot of square foot, does show new classrooms. So I mean, from first glance, it looks like they're going to be generating more traffic and have a higher fee. But they had data showing that from their presentations that we're not, they weren't really projecting growth. They're reallocating, fitting the needs of their students because of different coursework and stuff. So again, they provide that information to us, we adjust it accordingly. And daycare, there were some studies done that there's actually many people would choose their daycare. I can sell myself included because I drive by one, not because of that. The book didn't properly reflect that, so we locally apply that and so have a lot of the adjacent communities as well. Common questions, I'm not going to hit on all these. If you want to ask me, I'm happy to go into them. But one thing I'd like to apply, let's say you have a development out there. There were 12 units of whatever it was, 12 units, those are being demoed. And then you're building 20 new units. The applicant would only be paying for the eight new units. So there was already that art demand on the system, so they're not paying for that. They're only paying for the nets and increase. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. I don't know if there's anything you would also like to highlight?
No, I don't think so. I think you you covered it all, and we're just seeking to introduce this tonight. If you have any questions, happy to answer them tonight or between now and the next meeting.
There was a question about the six-month waiting period. Are we outside of that window if we wait to vote? There's no reason to pass this on first reading.
Yeah, but there's no reason to pass it on first reading. In fact, if you pass it at the end of this month, it would actually be able to go into effect prior to your last, to your next one expiring. So the ordinance is actually drafted so that it becomes effective after the waiting period or by November 1st, whichever is later.
Any questions? This is for us.
Two different mentions. First off, before that though, Mr. Helman, this really, you guys did a great job on this. A lot of work, I know, goes into this, so thank you for that. Some developments, and this is more on the park side, that some developments, then we will allow to pay pilots in lieu of them having that. That is completely outside of this scope and on that, correct?
Yeah, so the pilot, so that is, from my understanding, I don't know, is separate, is separate from this. That is correct, yes.
Correct, yes, separate from road impact.
I was 90 for six.
Yep.
Perfect. And then, second thing I had was just that, as you know, Mr. President, Roads Committee had a tremendous amount of discussion about this. We went through it. We didn't have a final number by the time, so we didn't vote for it. But I think I can speak for everyone on the committee that we all were in support of. We knew pretty much where it was going to be, and I think we were all in support of it, just so everybody knows that. We took a pretty deep dive into it at the prior months.
Believe it or not, this is the shorter version.
We got the longer version in Roads Committee.
Thank you, that's all, that's all I had.
Yeah, it's well thought out. Any other questions? See you in two weeks.
Sounds good, thank you.
Counsel to consider ordinance 130424 and ordinance adopting park impact fees.
Second.
Matt Light.
Thank you, counsel. Matt Light, Deputy Mayor, appreciate your consideration of the proposed adjustments to the park impact fee. Jim did a great job of kind of setting the table in terms of how these impact fees are approached. The park impact fee is done under the same statutory framework, and it takes the same 10-year horizon, goes at the population growth expectations. The main difference, two main differences. One, these are only imposed on residential permits as opposed to to all new building. And then the other is that, you know, the focus on park, green space, recreational amenities as opposed to the the roadway needs and the impact. It was, it was noted, but just want to touch on kind of the extensiveness of the analysis and the presentations and vetting, the advisory committee work that Mr. Helman talked about, that took place after the staff analysis and the work with our consultants. These fee proposals and the studies that underlie them were also presented to the Roads Committee in early March. The the road impact fee was, the park and road impact fees were presented to the Plan Commission in March. And both of these fees were presented and vetted with the Finance Committee last week as well. And the park impact fee proposal will be vetted with the Park Board tomorrow night in addition to the, to the presentation for you here. And one of the things, I think, just to kind of touch on with with this, both of these proposals and kind of analysis sets being based on population growth projections, one of the things that staff identified early on was the benefit of aligning both of these studies to do it at the same time in the past that hadn't been done together. The park impact analysis was last done in 2019, road impact analysis was last done in 2021. We thought it made a lot of sense to do those together, to bring these to you in in tandem since there are so many overlapping considerations. The recommended amount for the park impact fee is the 4122 figure that's shown here. It was on the slide, that is, that is on page four of your, of your ordinance, which, which is indicated there for 2024 with a 3% annual adjustment for inflationary considerations. That 4122, it's a couple of key drivers really to point out, and Jim, Jim touched on it, but specifically within the parks context. Construction cost considerations, for example, a trail mile. The analysis under the previous study in 2019 included a trail mile being estimated at $350,000 based on our experience as well as Endot experience and giving awards, granting awards in the next level trails program. We've adjusted that to $1 million per trail mile, so significant impact, as you can see from that change. Acreage acquisition for provision of a park and recreation space had been designated at $35,000 an acre under the previous study. That's been upwardly adjusted to 60,000 based on what we've seen locally. So those were two of the key drivers that led to, along with the population projections, the recommended fee that you see in the ordinance in front of you. Mr. Layman, from Layman and Layman is here with us, has done extensive analysis for the Parks Department for a number of years on this set of topics, is available for any questions and elaboration that you might desire. But again, as I mentioned, it's been pretty extensively vetted and presented to to all of you in different committee structures, but we we're at your disposal with any questions or requests for elaboration.
Any questions? Came all this way from Mission Walkman. Any questions? All right, we'll see you in two weeks.
Okay, on to proposed development presentations. Mr. Hughes, would you like to recap this Reed's summary of our new process?
Yes, I will. So the new process that we're rolling out this year for projects that are introduced to you at your last meeting and forward is that we will have a presentation done to the council. The matter will then go to Plan Commission, and then it'll come back to you for just one more meeting. If a project receives a significant amount of remonstrance, we'll note that for you. The council is able to hold it over if for some reason you want to. But absent that, you can vote on it at your, at your first meeting. So that's the the new way we're rolling things out. I don't know, it's different for those who've been on the council for a while. It is consistent with how other communities in the neighboring area handle these zoning matters, and it's consistent with what statute says. Also, wanted to again introduce to you all, I think you all know Jamie, but Jamie Thompson with the mayor's office, who is our project manager and helps us now with the process of helping applicants from the time they apply until their construction is complete and follows through the whole process. So we have a much more streamlined process to make sure that folks are moving through the process correctly, and we have one set of eyes on the project at all times.
Thank you. Any questions about the process?
Counsel to hear introductory information for 42 acres along Brook School Road between 136th and 141st Streets for the development of a for-rent community, including townhomes, villas, and a commercial area, a part of the Hyde Park Plan Development. Jim Schenover. We, we had discussed a recap of Hyde Park. Did you come prepared to speak about that a little bit for the new council members? He did.
Yes.
Give bonus points for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, for the record. My name, Jim Schenover, attorney with the law firm Nelson and Frankenberger. This particular matter, we're representing the applicant, Trenitas Development LLC. A few members of the Trenitas team are here with us tonight. Also with us tonight is Steve Ball of MAB Capital Investments on behalf of the owner of the real estate, as well as one of the architects behind the Hyde Park development and the vision behind it. This is an introductory presentation. This request seeks rezone and preliminary development plan approval for a for-rent residential community that will also have a commercial outlaw component to be known as Kingsley at Hyde Park. The map before you. The map before you is the overall master plan for the Hyde Park project that shows the overall boundaries of that particular development. And you can see that the development is bordered by a campus parkway to the north, Bowden Road down to Brook School, and then as well as 141st Street dissecting generally the middle, and then to the south, 136th Street. Hyde Park was a 274-acre mixed-use development when it was brought forward. And again, the master, the overall master plan was approved in 2021. And now you're starting to see sections of Hyde Park undergoing development, which is really an exciting thing based on what they explained they wanted to deliver and what they are actually delivering. So that's all very good news. With each new project that comes into Hyde Park, it comes back before Plan Commission review and Council review for approval. And so that's one of the reasons that we're here before you tonight. This second exhibit is just a a blow up of the the site location map for the particular 42 area, 42 acres of real estate that's the subject of of this request. Again, you'll see that we're, we're north of and adjacent to 136th Street, west of and adjacent to Brook School Road. Over to our northwest is a very large, large section of Hyde Park, which is the natural preservation, open space area that that is a large part of that particular community. This next exhibit was included in your informational brochures, and this is the concept plan for Kingsley at Hyde Park. This again is a master plan to purpose-built for-rent residential community. It will also include some commercial retail outlots here at the northwest intersection of 136th Street and Brook School Road. The residential portion of the community will include a variety of townhome and duplex villas. The duplex villas are both a ranch product and a two-story duplex product. We spent significant time with the development team, Jamie, Sarah, all their group at initial stages with different versions of the elevations that have been since continued to go through an evolution and a refinement. We included all the elevations of proposed homes in your informational packet. With that said, you can see that the community is split basically between a northern portion and a southern portion. Northern portion would contain all for-rent residential homes. The southern portion would have the commercial outlots, again, at the intersection here, and then as well as additional homes located to the east. There are significant amenities that will be included. That's what these particular residents come to expect and enjoy. And so I'll show you in a moment renderings of the clubhouse area, the fitness center. The community will also have a pool as well. This first elevation, and there's many that are included in your brochures, this is one of the examples of the ranch duplex villa. Again, we've included a four-sided architecture behind tab four of your brochures. But you'll see the architectural treatment of these particular homes are very well-designed. A lot of brick component on that front elevation and a lot of detail on all four sides. Another example of of one of the villa type of homes, again, included in your brochure. This would be an example of one of the types of the, what we're referring to as the two-story duplex villa offerings. Again, more examples in your brochures. And then finally, this is an example of the townhome dwellings. These would be two-story only townhomes in this particular community. Rendering of clubhouse, which was also included in your brochures. Clubhouse and the pool portion would be on that northern portion of the site. On the southern portion of the site, there would be a fitness center, and this is a rendering of the fitness center. And then finally, character rendering elevation of what would be for the proposed commercial outlots at the southeastern portion of development. In conclusion, we'll be appearing before the ARB Committee and Technical Advisory Committee next week. We'll also conduct a neighborhood meeting that will occur prior to our May Plan Commission meeting. With that said, I thank you for your time and would remain available for any questions that you may have of us. Thank you.
I just want to say, the expectations for Hyde Park were pretty high, and I think this is, this hits a sweet spot, this is a nice project.
We appreciate that on behalf of our client and the development team, who've had a lot of input on the, on the architectural.
Any questions or comments?
Number of units in this complex?
Excuse me?
How many units?
286 homes.
The elevations are great.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go away, though. Counsel to, counsel to hear introductory information for 15.5 acres south of east 146th Street and east of Maryland Ridge subdivision for the development of 74 for-sale townhomes, a part of Hyde Park Plan Development. Mr. Schenover.
Good evening again. For the record, Jim Schenover, attorney with the law firm Nelson and Frankenberger, represent the applicant, Grand Communities and Fisher Homes. With us tonight from Fisher Homes is Sean Sullivan, Division President. Also with us from Grand Communities is Rob Hayes. And also with us, Steve Ball on behalf of MAB Capital Partners and one of the developers of Hyde Park, as well as John Davishay, who's in my office. This is another site that is located within the Hyde Park overall development. And this seeks rezone and preliminary development plan approval for a for-sale residential townhome community that would be known as Oasis at Hyde Park. The exhibit I have before you, I I just showed you a moment ago, but that is the overall master plan for Hyde Park. Again, approved in 2021, development is underway in that overall community. And because this would be another new project within the development, we come before the Plan Commission and Council for re- for review and approval. This next exhibit was also included in your informational brochures. This outlines the subject site, which consists of 15 acres on the western side of Hyde Park development. You'll see that the site is just south of and adjacent to Campus Parkway, and it is just north of what will eventually be the extension of 141st Street. This is the conceptual plan for the development. North, again, would be at the top of the page, Campus Parkway in this direction, 141st Street to our south. Again, this would consist of 74 three-story for-sale townhomes to be built by Fisher Homes from their midtown series of homes. Access to the community will eventually be coming from the south, from 141st Street, when 141st Street is extended. This final exhibit, also included in your informational brochures behind tab four, this is a rendering of Fisher's Tustin Townhome model. This is a rear-load type of townhome that would be included within the community. They also have another model called the Brookline that would be included in the community, and that would be a front-load unit. All townhomes would have an attached two-car garage. All townhomes would have driveways with sufficient length and width to permit two cars parking on driveways, and then some guest parking would also be provided around the community. These townhomes are going to range in square footage from 2,000 to over 2,500 square feet, primarily consist of two- and three-bedroom units, and the architecture includes varied roof lines, masonry, and other details. As far as anticipated sales price, Fisher would anticipate those beginning around the high $400,000 range, depending on home size and buyer options. In conclusion, again, we'll be appearing before TAC and the ARB committee next week. We'll conduct a neighborhood meeting prior to the May Plan Commission meeting, and with that said, again, we thank you for your time on this matter tonight, and I'll remain available if you have any questions. Thank you.
I'm always amazed when we end up with a piece of property that looks like that, that shape. The only concern, and that you presented a product that hits our missing metal component of our housing study. The only question I have, and it's not really up to me, but if the fire department were to come back and ask about the length of that drive, is there a plan or an opportunity to connect to, I don't know what the neighborhood is, to the west?
Yeah, Maryland Ridge. We will look into that prior to going to the Plan Commission meeting. I'd rather give you that.
Yeah, I just, it's a concern.
Assurance than trying to go through the different possibilities of how that might work, but we will, yes.
One way in, one way out. It costs at least a turn.
But it's up to the fire department, you know, just. Any other questions? Again, I thank you for the quality of the architecture in Hyde Park.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Don't go anywhere.
Okay.
Council to hear introductory information for 52 acres west of Promise Road at an intersection of 191st, 196th Street for the development of 147 single-family homes to be known as Branson Reserve Plan Development. Jim Schenover.
Thank you again. For the record, Jim Schenover, attorney with the law firm of Nelson &amp; Frankenberger. We represent the applicant, MI Homes of Indiana. With us tonight on behalf of MI Homes is John Isaacs and Ethan Spalding. Also with me is John Dobyshevitz from your office. Again, this is another introduction presentation. This request seeks rezone and preliminary development plan approval for a for-sale, single-family detached residential community to be known as Branson Reserve. This exhibit was included in your informational brochures, site location map. The site consists of two parcels that contain approximately 52 acres. You'll see the site is located west of and adjacent to Promise Road and nearby 196th Street. Real estate's currently zoned R1 residential, and we're seeking to rezone to a planned development ordinance that would have R3 as the underlying zoning classification. Uses and zoning classifications that surround the real estate include, to the east, there is a larger parcel with a single-family home, which is actually zoned R3 PD. To the south is Rata Bush Woods Community, and to the southeast, Rata Bush Farms, both of which are zoned R2 PD. To the west is Meadows Knoll Community, which is zoned R1, and then to the north, we have some small individual parcels that are also zoned R1. This exhibit is the concept plan for the community. Also included behind tab three of your brochures, again, Promise Road would be along this perimeter, northbound in this direction. This for-sale residential community will have approximately 147 homes consisting of a mix of ranch and two-story homes. Access to the community would be from Promise Road, and then we're also connecting to an existing sub-street in the community to our immediate west. There will also be some programming in this space, which is an open space common area, provide an area for the residents of the community to gather and socialize. Regarding the elevations, these exhibits were included behind tab four of your brochures. There are many examples, so I'm just putting a few up on the projector for you, but these would be some examples of the ranch homes. And these are examples of their two-story homes. These are from MI's smart product lineup series. Square footages will range from 1,500 square foot to 2,900 square feet, and anticipated price ranges, based on what MI is anticipating, could be ranging from $380,000 to up to $450,000, depending upon home size and buyer amenity selections. In conclusion, again, next week, we'll be appearing before the ARB and the TAC committee. We'll also conduct a neighborhood meeting prior to our May Plan Commission meeting. And with that said, thank you for your time to on this matter, or remain available for any questions you may have. Sorry for the redundancy.
Mr. President, I do have one question. Is there a similar product or development like this around here?
Yeah, John Isaacs indicated that Silo Ridge would have similar product.
Thank you. I like to go look at them. It's better than me just looking at paper. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is another one, just want to make a comment about the HOA agreement. There needs to be some language in your HOA agreement about for-rent units.
Yeah.
Also, I saw, had a chance to see an earlier version of this, and I appreciate that you have worked on the architecture quite a bit. Thank you.
Yes, yeah. A compliment goes to MI, they did.
The site plan lacks a little creativity, but I appreciate what you've done with homes.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Council to hear introductory information for an amendment to the lofts on 10th Street Plan Development for the construction of two office rental salon suites at 1032 and 1046 Clinton Street, and 1041 and 1045 Wayne Street. Mason Klein.
Members of the council, thank you for having us. My name is David Klein with DB Klein Construction, representing ourselves, and this is Mason Klein. I was going to give a quick background about ourselves. We've done a little building in Noblesville over the years in the residential sector in Lock Haven, and we've primarily been doing commercial construction over the last five years, but company's been around for 31 years. And currently, we lease and manage all of our own properties, and we will be doing the same with this proposed project that is all managed in-house by our staff. In addition to that, we build all of our properties with the intention of holding them. We're not a developer that comes in and builds and flips properties right after we get them leased. So I have properties that I've owned now for 25 years, so it's something that we're committed to the community, that we go into and take that seriously. We've done a lot of development on small infill-type project, and so our projects, we've done a lot over the last seven years, has been the completion of the Village Center in the Village of West Clay in Carmel that was originally developed by Brenwick Development, and we've finished out the majority of all the commercial component of that. There's some photos of some examples of the properties that we've done there as well. And with this project, we're excited about entering into the commercial sector in the downtown area in Noblesville, and I'm going to let Mason continue on about the project review. Thank you.
Good evening. As David said, my name is Mason Klein. The reason that we are up here today, as you mentioned, is we're requesting an amendment to the 10th Street Lofts PUD. We are proposing two buildings, one on Wayne Street and one on Clinton, all with the intersection of 10th Street there. The bottom photos, as you can see here on the screen, are the, is the property on Wayne Street. The top two photos are the property on Clinton Street. These are going, are proposed to be two office/retail business buildings. The Wayne Street units will have, they'll have four units on each floor. The Clinton Street will have three units on each floor, and as you can see, both are obviously only two stories with an exterior stairway with trex decking, as well as an aluminum railing on the exterior. Both buildings will have brick on three-fourths of the sides. The backside will be hardy siding as well. We will have a concrete sidewalk that'll extend from the front of the building all the way to the curb, as I know that's been a concern from some of the neighbors in that area on the current vacant land right there, as there was no sidewalk at the moment, but that will be completed by us there once the completion of the building has occurred. We have also included five parking spaces on the backside of each building. We know there's not a requirement for parking in the downtown area, but we have included five of those to hopefully alleviate some of the traffic and street parking along Wayne and Clinton Street as well. We have found that when our other buildings that we do have, like David mentioned, in Hamilton County, Village of West Clay, and the outskirts of Carmel as well, that when these types of units are 100% leased, the tenants are only in the unit about 60% of the time. So hopefully, that can also help with some of the parking and congestion concerns that the locals had as well for that area. One of the main uses we've found is it's a great incubator space. We've had a lot of attorneys, realtors, hairstylists, barber shops, estheticians, really, you name it, we've had them in the retail and the second floor as well, that have used these as the start of their business, or if they've been in that industry for several years and decided to go off on their own to then grow into a larger space within that community. One thing we've also found is that a lot of the time, people have decided to move their homes into that same community that they are already working in, which we have found with the Village of West Clay in Carmel, Indiana as well. I believe that's really all we have, unless David, you have anything else to add for those?
Open for any questions. I originally, when I heard this was going to be not residential, I had some concerns, but I think you've done a good job of balancing the aesthetic with what's to your east and what's to your west. I appreciate, and I think this is a use we definitely need downtown. I also appreciate your communication with the neighbors. That has turned the tide on what the original communication was, and you have some fans that are excited about it in that community, so thank you for that communication.
Terrific. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. It was a pleasure to meet with, and it was fun to get to know the neighbors in that area.
I appreciate you adding parking to this. I think that's a great community as well. Any other questions?
Mr. President, just for clarification, is this behind, like, is it behind where the lofts of 10th Street are?
It'd be.
The two vacant lots.
Two vacant lots.
I actually have an overhead here that I can.
Yeah, it's hard to imagine.
Show you my.
Drive out there, I was trying to say that.
Yeah, it's hard to imagine, but.
Todd and I were both looking at this one, trying to.
So the current 10th Street on Lofts are right here.
Yeah, okay.
And then both properties, this is the Clinton Street, not as the Wayne Street property.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you.
And the parking will connect via the pre-existing parking lot alleyways that are there for the 10th Street Lofts as well.
Okay, thank you.
I also appreciate that you guys have a track record of working on excellent projects with attention to detail, and that's, you know, on a specific project like this, that's what it needs, so I'm glad you guys are the ones bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council to hear, council to hear introductory information for an amendment to the Cranbrook Plan Development to permit the construction of a 14,772-square-foot building for Goddard School. Kelly Cantor.
Kelly couldn't be here tonight. I'm Mitch Manders. I'll be speaking to the project. Thanks for having us here tonight, council members. I'm Mitch Manders. My wife Denise here and I, we own the, currently own and operate a Goddard School in West Carmel, Indiana. So tonight, here to talk to you about a proposed Goddard School in West Noblesville. So let's see. I'll get into a little bit more about the demand and why we feel that this is a good site for our location. But first, just a little bit of background on Denise and me. I'm, again, like I said, I'm Mitch, and really, my background is more in accounting and finances, how I started my career. My wife and I both started our careers at Deloitte &amp; Touche, and most recently, I spent 12 years in the Weaver Popcorn organization, mostly in management and finance roles, most recently as a chief finance officer of one of the subsidiaries of Weaver Popcorn. My wife, after she left Deloitte, she went to work for Cummins here locally in their distribution business, and became an executive director within their internal controls group of their finance department. So we bring management really as our background, and our passion is really helping kids and making sure that we are doing the right things for not only the kids, but the teachers in the childcare industry. So we have three young kids, so we have a nine-year-old, seven-year-old, three-year-old, and we've been through daycare as a parent. We've been in multiple locations, and we've really seen the need for that high-quality education for, and really, the health and safety aspect for the kids. That's really what got us passionate about looking into this business. So, you know, our first exposure to the Goddard brand really was as parents, and we just really love the brand for what it stands for, really meeting kids where they're at, helping to make sure they're developed and ready for kindergarten. And then also, we're really focused on our side of really making sure that we're bringing leadership into the early childhood education industry and creating a really good school environment for those teachers. So we believe we have a good opportunity to do that here in West Noblesville. So really, next step, I'd like to show you some of the research we've done as to the demand for that high-quality education. I don't know how to zoom in on this thing. Okay, so when looking through, and this really chart is split into two main sections here. The top half, everything is really from the 2022 census from online, and the bottom is from the Family Social Services Administration, really as of seven weeks ago when I pulled the data. So when looking at Hamilton County and the north side of Indianapolis, Noblesville is growing very fast, and we need to make sure that you all have, we all have the high-quality early childhood education to keep up with that growth. So when comparing with Zionsville Fisher's Westfield Carmel, really, some of the main takeaways from a percentage of population here, Noblesville at 8% is higher than all the other suburbs. In raw numbers, even you heard Mayor Jensen earlier today say up to 77,000 now in Noblesville two years later. So continuing that really good growth, right now, probably anticipating that you're going to be passing, Fisher's have the most kids under five years old on the north side of Indianapolis here, which is incredible. However, as of seven weeks ago, right now, only nine licensed childcare centers in all of Noblesville. With that, only two of those being path to quality level four, which is the highest level of quality you can have from the state of Indiana. So when you look at it from a ratio perspective, as the growth continues in Noblesville, right now, really Noblesville could, from a child under five per childcare center, could really double the number of childcare centers just to keep up the pace with the other north suburbs here. So to go along with that, we obviously, in our situation, can't cover the entire city of Noblesville. We wanted to focus on an area that we felt was most underserved. We wanted to focus on an area that we felt was most underserved. So our target area, and I'll have a little map that shows this in the next slide here, really West Noblesville. So it's actually basically on the border where Moon Town Road and State Route 32 are is our site. East Westfield, West Noblesville, right now, there's over 1,400 children that are under five years old within a two-mile radius. Nationally, when you look at those numbers, over 60% of children under five will enroll in some sort of childcare facility before kindergarten. Hamilton County, Noblesville, as we know, there's a lot more dual-income families, there's a lot more, lower unemployment rate. Really that shows more need for that higher, or high-quality education for kids before they get to kindergarten than really the rest of the national average. Right now in West Noblesville, which, again, I'll have a map, but really kind of west of the river there, we only have four licensed childcare centers within West Noblesville. That total capacity for those centers, 649. Really only 40 infant spots for all of West Noblesville that those four centers can serve right now. And right now, some of those are new, but none of them are past the quality level four. The daycare, the Goddard School that my wife and I operate right now is past the quality level four in West Carmel. Quality's a big deal to us, and we would bring that type of commitment into this project. So you can see here, the target area, the State Route 31 coming down here, and 32 going across, 38 going up. So really, again, Moon Town Road, Gray Road, right at State Route 32. So within a two-mile radius there, the Goddard proprietary algorithms, we also have a system where we're collecting leads. So the blue stars that you see here would be other Goddard Schools in kind of the north-central Hamilton County area. Based on their recommendations, best on, based on the actual leads we're collecting with address data, so we could actually plot it on a map, which is usually only about a third of the actual leads we get. You can see clearly that within this two-mile radius, we do have demand for those families that have actually reached out to Goddard Schools about their availability for childcare and left addresses. So we can see that that's really a similar pattern to what you'd see even closer to some of the other Goddard Schools that we have. So it shows that this area, there's definitely interest, not only in high-quality education, but in the Goddard brand specifically. So again, this area, really east of 31, south of 38, 32, and then west of the river is kind of that main target area there. With the growth, Noblesville seeing average household income over 110,000 in this area. We just feel like there's really good opportunity here to make sure we keep up with the growth and offer that high-quality education. So what we're proposing, I believe you all should have received copies of this from Joyce Anne. We have, this is the site plan, so on the left side to orientate, left side of the drawing here is State Route 32. On the top part of the drawing is Moon Town Road, and then on the right side would be Castamere, which is the cut-through street there. So we're looking at three front yards really for this project, where we are facing our Goddard School 14,722 feet, facing, with the main door facing to the west. We have had two pre-filing meetings with Joyce Anne and her team. I feel we got some pretty good feedback in those that I feel that we've already addressed. We're certainly open to hearing other feedback that you all might have and making some accommodations along the way. But just some of the highlights, you know, we want to make sure, we've seen other schools in the area. We don't want our playgrounds on State Route 32, even really on Moon Town Road, so we've put that on the north side, closer to the residential areas. We also know parking, especially at childcare centers, certain times of day can be pretty crazy, and so we definitely are gonna be following the recommendations and the, and the rules around here for the one spot for every 200 square feet. So we have 74 parking spots here for this facility. Just for reference, the one that we have in Carmel is about a third of this, or about two-thirds of the size of this one, and we have about 32 spots. So we're gonna have more than double here at this location. Signage, you'll see it on some of the elevation pictures if you haven't seen already, but really we're gonna have signage, large signs on the building facing west, towards Moon Town, facing south, towards 32, and then monument sign on the north, kind of right by the interests there, off of Castamere. There's other plans. We'll make sure that we're compliant with all the rules, everything that we need to do within Noblesville. From that elevation standpoint, you can see, really, we have stone levels at the bottom, hardy plank up through the middle there, with the architectural shingles on the top. There'll be a large gable, really facing on the west side, as well as to the south side. On the gable facing west will be those trusses where the Goddard sidewalk should be onto the truss itself there. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's really related. Goddard goes through a process where they look through their prototypes, make sure that the layouts, make sure that the outsides are staying modern, staying, you know, well-laid-out, easy for traffic flow. Goddard actually just released this. This would be one of the first new prototypes of the model that they have in play, so, you know, really updated for the more modern school here. And from a room plan perspective, when looking at capacity-wise, really the highlights being, we anticipate 200 total capacity of the school, two infant rooms, instead of our, our current school only has one, so it'd be nice to offer more infant space, two infant rooms for 16, total capacity of 200, and we expect to create 35 to 40 jobs, payroll's about a million and a half or more within the next two years as we would be up to capacity. That's all I have for tonight. You know, we're really excited and appreciate you all having us out here to talk through it. You got any other questions? More than happy to answer now, or at a later time.
Mr. Voice.
Okay, so I just, seeing that with all of our Noblesville schools and we have school zones and that kind of stuff, you mentioned the making sure that the playground's not right there, which I appreciate. Is there a problem with it being right there on 32? I know you know a lot more about this than I do. Is there a traffic issue, anything with kids darting or anything?
We will have the full perimeter fenced in. That's what we do right now. So we'll make sure, every area that a kid will be, first off, they're gonna be supervised at all times by teachers, and then, you know, following the state ratios. But yeah, it'll all be fenced in. Playground will be fenced in. There'll be multiple levels of fences. So each playground has its own enclosure, as well as the school. Every place, there's a door will be fenced in. The front, obviously, will have not a fence in front of it, but there's, as you have seen in the entryway, two doors to get in and out, where there'll be security. We'll visually inspect every person that comes in and out, and we can help the parents. Same setup we have at our current school now, so.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Counsel to hear introductory information for construction of a Wawa Fuel Center and a Garden Office Building on approximately 4.5 acres at the southwest corner of East 146th Street and Howe Road, to be known as Howe Campus Corner Plan Development. Joe Farr.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mark Leach, and I'm a land use planner with Fagri Drinker with offices at 600 East 96th Street, Suite 600 in Indianapolis, here representing Joe Farr with JDF Greenfield, the petitioner. Also here with me this evening are Patrick Moon, who's a real estate project engineer with Wawa, and also Andy Broker, Senior Counsel with Fagri Drinker. JDF is pleased to introduce a new plan development at the southwest corner of 146th Street and Howe Road, near the west end of the corporate campus, the city's corporate campus district. This location is at the southern edge of Noblesville city limits. Couple areas here, and it's directly adjacent to the Woodbury neighborhood in Fishers. Zoom in just a little bit here. Speaking of the Woodbury neighborhood, Joe Farr has been working on this project for well over a year and has met with the Woodbury Homeowners Association Board on multiple occasions. And after incorporating feedback from the neighbors, the project has received unanimous endorsement from this neighborhood's board. As seen on the thoughtfully designed concept plan, the plan development consists of a Wawa convenience store, fuel center on the eastern two-thirds of the site, and an approximately 9,500 square foot garden residential-style office building on the western one-third of the site, closer to the residential neighbors to the west. I think our materials were posted online, and we've got some illustrative building elevations for the Wawa, and also the residential-looking office building in tab four there. I'll just flip through those real quick. There's the Wawa. This is illustrative building example for the office building. We've also included a landscaping plan, a lighting plan, a signed package for the Wawa store, and our proposed rezone and plan development ordinances in our presentation materials as well. Additionally, Steve Fairbach, President of A&amp;H, of A&amp;F Engineering, has conducted a traffic operations analysis for the project and submitted that to planning and engineering departments about two and a half weeks ago. He has not yet received any comments back at this time on the traffic study. Let's just flip back to the site plan here and keep it there for a while. So overall, we believe that 146th Street is a rapidly growing commuter corridor, is underserved by high-end gas convenience and food mart options. There are zero convenience stores offering gas located on the south side of 146th Street for the benefit of eastbound traffic between State Road 37 and I-69. Currently, there are two convenience stores with gas serving the area, this area of Noblesville. Both of those locations are positioned on the north side of 146th Street, further to the east of this site. With Noblesville's corporate campus rapidly growing, adding a convenience store that offers great food, coffee, and gas would serve as an essential and desirable amenity to the surrounding neighborhoods and businesses and the many visitors to this area. Total project costs will represent an investment of approximately $8 to $10 million in the Noblesville community. Timing-wise, we are scheduled to attend the April 18th TAC meeting to get technical feedback, and the Plan Commission Public Hearing is tentatively scheduled for May 20th. We will mail out our public notice for that hearing, and we also plan to invite neighbors to a neighbor meeting held a week or two prior to the hearing, and hopefully that'll be at Promised Road Elementary School. It's still yet to be finalized on date for that. Because of the close proximity of this site to the city of Fishers, we have also met with Fishers Planning and Engineering Departments, and we're keeping them in the loop and taking their feedback as this project progresses as well. If ultimately approved by the council, JDF expects development activities to begin in early summer this year. With that, our team is happy to answer any initial questions you might have and get your preliminary feedback on the project. Thank you so much for your time.
Is this in the Fishers sewer district?
Yes.
I was also curious, because the driveway is so far south, if there was any thought to flipping the site plan and putting the canopies to the south, just to make a little better presentation on 146th Street? Just curious if there's any thought.
I might have, I might have one of the other team members come up and put it on.
Joe Farr, JDF Development, JDF Greenfield. Initially, our site plan had the pumps closer to the residences with the building at the hard corner. That was the ideal location for Wawa to have their building. After meeting with the neighbors initially, they did not want the pumps closer to their homes. We made the adjustment to move the pumps to the hard corner and the Wawa off of the hard corner, based on our feedback from the neighbors, that they just did not want those pumps closer to the homes. The Wawa building also provides a nice buffer from those pumps to the residents to the south. They were worried about cars coming in, music, you know, things of that nature. So we made that change based on the feedback from the neighbors.
Although it's a different city, I do appreciate that, because they will call us. I appreciate that you listened to them and responded.
They will call. I knew that. We've spent a lot of time talking to the neighborhood to secure their approval for the project, and we made a lot of changes to the plan to accommodate their concerns, just based on the fact that we knew you would get that feedback.
I think the Garden Office makes a nice buffer, too, to them.
It does. It's a residential feel to the building. It has that shingle roof, and that's part of why we use that building to, to help buffer the development from the residents as well. So, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Voice?
Seems like I'm just the one every time, huh? Quick question. I have heard from constituents, they've heard a lot about a potential Wawa at 191st and 37. Would this be in addition to, or would this be instead of, in lieu of that one then?
So the 191st and 37 site, I do also have that land under contract. That would be an additional site. That would not be replacing this site.
Okay.
That's an additional submarket, is what we would call that for Wawa.
Okay.
And we're in our discussions with the residents in that neighborhood as well. So I'm gonna start going, talking to all of those neighbors and addressing their concerns, buffering trees and all of those things to try to get some support from them as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right. Counsel to consider an amendment to the Noble West Plan Development on 31 acres to include approximately three acres of commercial development, 284 apartments, and 154 sale townhomes north of Edelstall Drive and east of Hazel Dell Road. You're not Jim Schinever.
We thought we'd give Jim a break on this one. So for the record, I am Jennifer Sewell. I am with Cityscape Residential. And with me, I have Jim Thomas from Cityscape Residential, Ty Reinhardt from Lennar, and then John Dabishawitz and Jim Schinever from Nelson &amp; Frankenberger. So here tonight, we are here to discuss an amendment to the longstanding Noble West PD, as well as a preliminary plan development. I know most of you are familiar with this project, so I'll try to keep it short and sweet. So this project is located in the Noble West PD. So we're here to discuss, in particular, the parcel located right here, which is at north of 146 and Hazel Dell, particularly 14, or Hazel Dell and Eden Shaw. So it's located north of the Kroger. The Kroger is going through its own zoning ordinance. This is separate from that amendment to the PD. So located north of the Kroger, jump into the site plan. So this parcel in the current Noble West PD is zoned for 611 multifamily units. So our proposal is what we're calling a down zone. So we are proposing 284 multifamily units, up to 150 townhomes, and then 30,000 square feet of retail outlaw spaces. So the multifamily units are located on the southeast corner. So six buildings located right here, these would be developed by Cityscape Residential. The townhomes are located on the northern portion, up to 150 townhomes, developed by Lennar. And then the 30,000 square feet of retail are located along Hazel Dell to be developed by Northwest Partners. They are doing the Kroger expansion and development. So the multifamily, up to 284 units, a mix of one, two, and three bedrooms. You can see a rendering up here on the left. We did work with staff initially to revise our architecture of the building to what you see here today. Parking is provided on the site through detached, attached, and surface parking. We'll have top-of-the-market finishes. These are market-rate apartments. A large clubhouse, around 9,000 square feet, co-working spaces, fitness center, dog wash, dog park, pickleball courts, and then a pool will be located behind the clubhouse. The townhomes will be located on those 15 northern portion, acres on the northern portion. Again, up to 150 townhomes is what we are proposing in the amendment. Lennar's current site plan has less than this. They're around 100 currently. The townhomes are, they're 116th town product. They've used this in Fishers and in Carmel, if you've seen those before. They're all three stories, or three bedrooms, two-car garages. three bedrooms, two-car garages. The site plan is oriented, so all of the garages are in-facing, so if you're driving along Hazel Dell, or on the road between the multifamily and the townhomes, you'll see the elevation that's shown here rather than the garages. These will start around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what their current projections are, and they start around two thousand square feet up to twenty-four hundred. And then, for the retail outlots, thirty thousand square feet, they'll get the users as, as they acquire them. The, between the PD ordinance and the EDA, there are limits on what these retail users can be, so they'll be very high, high-end users, and they'll be, I think, service users, something on compliment, both the townhomes, the shops to the south, and the multifamily. And here's some architecture styles, they'll be going for a clean and contemporary look. And then one item we did want to highlight, because it's been brought up, is the tree save area, so the current PD ordinance has a tree preservation area, and so with our amendment, we'll be keeping consistent with this area, so it is this area highlighted in yellow, it goes from the floodplain of the Kirkendall Creek up into our property line. So just as some updates, we have had our neighborhood meeting, Citiescape had our ARB for the multifamily portion, and then Lennar is going to ARB tomorrow, so we're excited for the project, we view it as a benefit, given the down zone, and in the mix of the uses, and with that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Where is the Lennar product currently?
It's at, so one, one sixteenth and College in Carmel, and then, where's that?
One one six town, just west of the down, down area.
Okay.
Ms. Sewell? Ms. Sewell?
Yeah, sorry.
Dillon Park is immediately south of the multifamily section?
Yeah, let me pull it up, yep, Dillon Park would be right here on the map.
So the parking for Dillon Park is across from the large parking area, the central meeting spot there of Dillon.
There's no parking, our lot, our parcel.
On, on the Dillon Park side, we're immediately across the street.
Yes, correct.
Any other questions? See you tomorrow at ARB.
Sounds good.
That's what we get for building great roads and great infrastructure.
You want the big one, or I'll leave you this one, and you can have this one too. Thanks, Andrew.
Counsel to consider a resolution, RC nine twenty-four, a resolution approving an economic development agreement with Citiescape Residential for a mixed-use development in the Noble West Plan Development. Andrew Murray.
Thank you, counsel, Andrew Murray, Economic Development Director, for the record, sticking with the same project that you just heard, and in an effort not to be redundant, I'm not planning to go into the details of the project, I'm happy to, but we can answer any questions at the end if you'd like, I think Ms. Sewell covered the project very thoroughly, so. But yeah, before you this evening, this is a resolution that will memorialize a partnership with Citiescape Residential and bring this project to fruition in Noblesville, as this council knows, Citiescape has already made substantial investments in the community, most recently with the completion of the Nexus Development in our downtown, and so obviously, we're absolutely thrilled to partner with them on another project. We appreciate them, we appreciate their willingness to listen, be flexible, and we certainly believe we've got another project that will be successful for the long term in Noblesville. As you'll note, in Exhibit A, the agreement, in addition to the obligations and the commitments from the developer, we are proposing to this council to make an investment in the project that, like all projects that we present and vet, if we believe it adds value, it meets strategic goals, and it will make an immediate impact, a long-term impact, we want to make strategic investments in secure projects here in Noblesville. So that investment comes in the form of issuing developer TIF bonds, which would be a not-to-exceed six point seven million dollars for the project, the debt service on that bond would be from a pledge of eighty-three percent of the TIF generated from just the multifamily project over twenty-five years, so that means that the city would retain the seventeen percent over twenty-five years for us to use those revenues for other available purposes and priorities. Again, you heard Ms. Sewell cover all the great benefits to the city and the taxpayer, this project checks a lot of strategic boxes, and so procedurally, we did vet this with Chairman Davis in this council's finance committee, and this partnership and project comes with a favorable recommendation. With that, we're happy to answer any questions.
So the seventeen percent is just on the multifamily?
Correct, that's a good point, so the seventeen percent would just be from the multifamily, and then the other TIF generating component would be the, the commercial retail, which is the thirty thousand square feet, which is not obligated with this partnership, so that would come to the city.
A hundred percent. Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Ms. Boyce?
I approve that we approve Resolution RC dash nine dash twenty-four as presented.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution RC nine twenty-four. Does a hand vote, all's in favor, raise your right hand. Eight oh. Okay. Counsel to receive a summary of fiscally neutral first-quarter appropriation transfers pursuant to Resolution RC one twenty-four. Caitlin Moss, you're not Ian Zagowski.
Not Ian Zagowski, Caitlin Moss, Deputy Controller. So under RC one twenty-four, the Controller's Office is allowed to make small, specific transfers of appropriations, and we just report to you every quarter, your report this quarter is that there were none.
Great.
I apologize that you had to sit through that entire reading, tell us that there were none.
I've been in my office preparing for the audit this week.
There you go, okay.
And good job getting that to zero. Counsel to receive a summary of appropriation of first-quarter grant proceeds pursuant to Resolution RC two twenty-four, Caitlin Moss.
Under RC two twenty-four, the Controller's Office is granted authority to appropriate proceeds of grant awards, and then we just report to you every quarter, you have the report in front of you, so if you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions? While the grant proceeds.
Save the best for last.
Thank you. Any counsel comments that haven't already been buried? Seeing none, we are adjourned.